Let us start the meeting of the Unionville Historic District and Properties Commission. We are going to start by reviewing and approving the June 4, 2020, meeting minutes. You all received them in the first packet and the second, there we go, and Shannon brings them up if you did not read them, if you do not use your homework, here they are right here. We didn't have a quorum at the last meeting.
We did partway through, so we just...
Amen. So, we had a good conversation about cultivation in the expansion report. Has everybody read the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
A good group, they do their homework. All right, can I have a motion to approve the June 4 minutes?
I make a motion to approve the June 4 minutes.
Thank you, a second?
I wasn't there, I would second it though.
Yeah, if you read them Bob and they make sense, there's no errors, you can go ahead.
Oh, okay.
No problem.
Thank you Bob, any discussion or edits to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, minutes approved, thank you.
And Lisa, I'm gonna jump in just real quick, just for clarification, every, all the members that are in attendance tonight are voting members, so that's Lisa, Howard, Bob, Barbara, Ann, Anne, you're all voting, could you give us the five for the evening?
Excellent, thank you Shannon. And now, I will recuse myself for the public hearing for the COA for 99 Lovely Street. And Bob, I believe you will chair the public hearing for the COA.
Yep, and I've got the legal notice, so I'll go ahead and read the legal notice and...
Would you please?
We've got it for the record. Town of Farmington, Unionville Historic District and Properties Commission, notice is hereby given that the Unionville Historic District and Properties Commission will hold an online public hearing on Thursday, originally scheduled for August 6, and now August 13, 2020, at 7:00 PM on the following application. Ted and Lisa Lindquist, application for certificate of appropriateness, remove three windows and install five windows on north wall of house and install heat pump for air conditioning at 99 Lovely Street, Unionville. At this hearing, interested persons may be heard and written communications received. A copy of this proposal is on file in the planning department at Town Hall, Farmington, Connecticut. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, July 16, 2020, Unionville Historic District Commission, Lisa Johnson, Chair.
Okay, I'd be glad to present this, this project to everybody. The first presentation you're seeing here on the screen is a drawing of what we intend to do, and then I'll show you some existing elevations with photographs following. So our intention is to do two things. To remove and replace existing windows for two reasons. Window number B, there are currently two windows there now, we would like to add a third to bring more light into the interior, and also make that section of the building more symmetrical and pleasing. Window C, we, is a crank open window which we installed in 1988, we would like to take that out and use that space and increase that space to put in two replacement windows, double hung, multi pane, to match the larger windows. So we clean up this wall, which has a variety of different kinds of windows at different Item A, which you see, is a condenser for a high velocity air conditioning system for the oldest section of our house. This is approximately 50 inches wide and 20 inches high. There are no exterior conduits, the conduit will go directly into a space within the house and then we'll have duct work throughout the older section. This unit will be shielded from public view by plantings, probably evergreens that will shield year round. Although replacement windows will be, will be double or single hung with wood frames, mullions and muntens to match the originals. I don't have samples obviously to show you now. What you'll see, so that is our intention, the section of the drawing on the bottom is an interior which you don't really need to look at, we're taking out an old staircase, I'll tell you the story of the building in a minute. Really a charming story, but I want to go now to the photographs, and if you just use your yoga moves and crane your neck, there we go. So here you see...
There you go, you got it.
Better. So here you see the north elevation of the house, which is a big blank wall, you see how we're trying with the two windows below the peak window to clean up that elevation with a third window, to just make it more symmetrical, bring more light into the interior of the house. To the right of that, you'll see the crank windows, which are over our sink in our kitchen, we propose to remove that and expand that, double it heading to the east, so to the left, to make that a larger window, those will be two double hung windows, because of the counter, they can't be full size like the ones under the peak, that is the height that we have to have for these windows. But in making those multi pane and making them double hung, we think that will kind of pull those windows together as a design unit. The condenser will be to the left of the two windows below the peak, right there, thank you Shannon, right there, that's, we're gonna be opening up that space where there's now a staircase, we're gonna take out, so the condenser will lead right into additional equipment, we're putting into a little closet area that we're building, and then duct work will move out from there on the interior of the building so that we don't have conduits on the exterior of the building. We've worked really hard to come up with an air conditioning system that doesn't have the conduits coming from multi split or mini split systems, we just didn't want that, that mess on the outside of the house. We're also going to have the, it's an original rubble stone foundation, we're gonna have that re-pointed, and you can't see it very well, but we have a multitude of wires coming up this side of the building, electrical wires, wires for internet, all sorts of things, those are going to be put into conduits and painted, so we'll just tidy, tidy that up. So I think that is my presentation. I will tell you that as you look at these photographs, our house has grown in a multitude of ways over many, many years, and the section of the house that you see to the far left in the second photograph down, with the peak that faces the road, was actually added to the original house, we believe in about 1890. It was a two floor structure, one room on each floor. Oral history tells us that this structure was taken someplace from Farmington Avenue, it was put in an ark's cart, dragged up Lovely Street and pasted to the front of our house. And when you come into our house, we'll show you when COVID is over, it looks, on the inside, that's exactly what it looks like happened, it's all original plaster. The second floor of this 1890 addition does not connect to the second floor of the original house. So we have two second floors, it's, it's worked, it's been funky, it's worked, but what we're doing this fall is, we're breaking through that wall and we're connecting the two second floors. We're hoping there's a pot of gold in the wall someplace.
Previous owner...
You never know.
You never know.
You never know. So we're doing a lot of work to the interior to kind of make it more livable, but as much as possible, keeping the, kind of the quirky homemade charm of the building. So questions, I'm sure you have, oh, and I will tell you that the gas tank on the north wall is going, we're taking out our gas stove, we know it's not environmentally responsible to have it, so we're installing an electric stove, so just so you know that that is going. All right, questions?
I have one question. You're putting in a heat pump for air conditioning, are you using it for heat also?
Well, no, we considered that, but we're not gonna do it, so this is gonna be a condenser for air conditioning.
Okay, so just air conditioner, okay.
Just the air conditioning, yeah.
There won't be a propane tank out there anymore?
There will not be, that will be removed.
And what, what would the tank be replaced, or?
The tank serves a gas stove that's in the kitchen, but we're replacing the gas stove with an electric stove, so we will not need it at all.
And the air conditioning unit will not use gas?
No, there will be, no, it's electric.
Next to your generator, right?
Well, yeah. Holy cow, no, we've got tents, we're going tents now. I will tell you that we've gone through five heating and cooling contractors to work out the air conditioning for this house. It's been an interesting and at times very frustrating process, because it's an odd house. We all, in historic houses, they're all strange, we finally found someone, an outfit in East Windsor that specializes in historic houses, and they were very responsive and immediately understood that we didn't want exterior conduits, that we had to work within the building, and they, they are helping us create these spaces for equipment that are really wonderful process, so, so I think one of our seminars for the winter ought to be about air conditioning in historic houses, and we've got the people to come speak.
Great.
Good idea.
Okay, so Bob, are you set for questions, or do you have something else?
I have a question, are these three windows, are they gonna be one unit, or are they gonna be separate windows framed to fit?
So, a lot depends, but we don't know yet, because there's a beam Bob, that comes down, it's actually on the drawing.
Yeah.
Support beam.
On this drawing Lisa?
Yeah, you could see on the right hand window under B, you see that line that comes all the way down through the building, that's a support beam in the original house. So the contractor's gonna work hard to use the existing two windows and add a third, but if he can't do that, he's gonna have to put in three brand new windows. Those windows were actually installed, the interiors were installed in the early 2000s, the casements are original of those two windows, we may need to replace those. Or refashion them in some way, put them closer together so we could fit that third window in, it all depends on that beam.
Question on the two smaller windows, are they gonna be crank outs, or are they gonna be raised?
They're gonna be raised, they're going to be double hung.
Okay. What was the other question I had, can't remember. Yeah, the unit from the outside will directly go through the wall where the unit is, right?
Correct.
And will that be through cement, or through wood?
That's, it's a rubble stone foundation, but it's gonna be, it's going to go up through the wood of the house, it's gonna go above the sill.
So you're gonna have to rip the sheet rock in this, or whatever, the plaster on the inside wall, right?
That's actually where the staircase is that we're gonna take out is, so that's gonna be ripped up anyway, right now, that's a old closet, so we're gonna be going through this old closet.
Okay.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah, we feel lucky it's there.
Yeah. It's really unique, but it's really well done.
Oh, thank you Bob, yeah.
That's a question for me.
Okay.
Ann, do you have any questions?
I don't think so.
Now, so, Howard, do you have anything?
All my questions were already answered, looks like a great project.
Okay, and Barbara, you're all set?
I am, yes.
Okay, so I am, this is a public hearing, and there are a few people that have called in, so I just want, if you have a question, if you can, you know, raise your hand and I'll let you speak if you have a question on this application. No, I'm checking, because there's not that many, so I'm checking, it doesn't look like anyone has a question, oh, Jack, go, okay, Jack, I think you can unmute yourself, so go right ahead.
Hi Shannon, this is Jack Kemper, 132 Lovely Street, and just wanna say, it looks great, and it's an improvement, so I just wanna say that we support it.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
In retrospect, the windows will really brighten up the room so much more.
Oh, yeah, yeah. You know, these older houses, bringing sunlight into the interior was not a priority, so the older part of the house, the rooms are really quite dark, and we're looking forward to having a bit more sunlight in there.
I think they were concerned more with keeping heat in.
Yes Barbara, yeah, you are.
Right.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions?
No, it looks...
Comments?
It looks like all's quiet, so...
Make a motion?
Well, let's close, close the hearing, we'll close the public hearing, and then you can, so Bob, you can just close it, and then, then yes, we'll be on a motion.
I make a motion that we close the meeting for accepting this remodeling, removal of three windows, replace with five windows and install a heat pump for air conditioning.
I shall move.
As said.
Okay, so Barbara, Barbara moved, and I need a second?
We need a second.
I second.
Okay, thank you Howard. Okay, any discussion, further, further discussion? Okay, if none, then all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? And any abstentions?
Abstentions.
Okay, we're all set.
Thank you, everybody.
Very good Lisa, go for it.
Looks lovely, I wanna see the finished job.
You got it, you got it, well, I'd love to have you come over when we're in process.
A bottle of wine too, right?
I'm not coming, no, 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 I'm not coming out to help out.
How about demolition?
That I could do.
That's great, well, thanks everybody. Well, I guess, Bob, can I, can I pick up where you left off then?
You are on.
Okay, thanks. So let's, we'll skip over membership solicitation since we've passed that stage in this process, and take a look at the expansion report. These are the property owners who are coming in, the Hart Nettleson House at 142 Lovely Street, the Albert J Brewer House at 132 Lovely Street, Jack's beautiful home, the Eugene B Ripley House at 111 Lovely Street, and the Asa Holly House at 796 Plainville Avenue in Farmington. I want to thank Bob Hoffman for taking the photographs, and also for John Berry, one of the owners of the Asa Holly House, for doing a considerable amount of his own research on the structure at a time when I couldn't go visit the building, so he was a wonderful team member. So have you all had an opportunity to read the report? A little bit?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Okay, oh, good, it's, any questions or edits, or anything that you have about the report you'd like to discuss?
Has this been passed by Horton?
Yes, but, I'm gonna think of that one, yes, I caught her before she left.
That's what I thought, thank you.
Yes, thank you, and she, she did send me some excellent edits, of course.
She's the best.
She really is, she really is. I must say, I'm really proud of this group of houses, the ones on Lovely Street are just a terrific collection, terrific collection, with marvelous stories and architecture that is both typical of Unionville and unique to Unionville. Also, the Asa Holly House is a very old building, close to Route 6, with a lot of active commercial development. This is a building that, putting it into the district is going to safeguard it, and the owners are thrilled to be able to do it. So this was a great project to work on, this, this package of buildings. So here on, here on Lovely Street, we had multiple wives, we had some insanity, what else did we have? We had all sorts of people disappearing and reappearing, there's some marvelous stories here.
Yeah, it was really, it was an interesting read, and I figured, like that poor woman, she lived in an unseen asylum for 60 years.
Yeah, yeah.
I can't even, I can't even imagine, and she was only like 31 or 32.
Yeah.
When I was teaching, it was awful.
Yeah, and her, one of her, I really discovered by looking at the names that one of her neighbors was a witness in having her...
Yes.
That was kind of interesting too, I don't know.
Yeah, be careful what you borrow from your neighbor, yes.
Anyway, that's your house, Jack, we're talking about your house.
Yeah, I love the term, an indifferent person.
I know, what does that mean?
We realized that, we didn't know the whole story, but we knew that somebody had some issues and went away.
Yeah.
Any bumps in the night in your house, Jack, any unquiet spirits?
No, no, I don't think any.
Okay.
But I pretty much tone deaf to that stuff anyway, so.
Back to town sleeper.
Fascinating, all the property going back and forth between women.
Yes.
Yes.
Isn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, during, you know, the 1800s, really.
Yeah.
Our next step is what?
So, and here, just real quick, here's the map that goes with this, just so that, you know, folks understand, so there's, these are the four Lovely Street lots, and then there's a map inset for the, for the house on Plainville Avenue, so, which is the Asa Holly House.
Right, right.
Yeah, so, so the next step is, if all the clerical items are taken care of, then this will go to the state, SHPO, it will go to TPZ, and our next TPZ meeting is September 14, and it'll go to town council for an introduction as a courtesy, so they're aware that this is coming, but ultimately, town council is the final approving authority at the very end of this journey, and because it also requires an amendment to the town ordinance to add these four properties in officially, so, so the first steps are SHPO and TPZ. TPZ is really just a positive endorsement back to the Unionville Historic District Committee, and then it is, you folks will actually hold a hearing, then this, likely this fall, we can probably get it done in November, December, if we, if I stay on top of everything here, and then it will have, once you have your hearing, there's a ballot process with the homeowners, so I have to work with the town clerk, and official ballots are sent to each of the homeowners via certified mail, and they have to return them within 15 days, indicating that they are confirming that yes, they want to be entered into the historic district, and then we have the public hearing with the town council, which would probably be early, late winter, early spring, so somewhere in the January to March timeframe. If we can get things to move quicker, we will, certainly, but that's probably the likely scenario on how this will move ahead.
This schedule, could you possibly send us all an email on that, so that everyone isn't too in sync for the...
Yeah, sure I can, it'll be a rough, yeah, a rough outline, because this is, their time, there's, they're like 65 day time chunks...
Right.
That we have, so, but yes, I'll be happy to do a little schedule for, for all of you.
Thank you.
Thanks Shannon, okay. Well, Shannon, we should vote on the acceptance of this report, yes?
We can, really, it's just to make sure that there's no clerical concerns, but you can, we can do a vote to, if everybody's in agreement, that it's ready to go to SHPO and TPZ and start the process, certainly.
Okay, so can I have a motion to approve the study report?
I make a motion to approve the study report as presented.
Thank you, can I have a second?
I second it.
Thank you, any other comments, or?
There's Barbara.
Oh, Barbara, yes.
Yep, I got it.
Any other comments or discussion about the report?
Very well done, thank you.
Thank you. Well, hearing none, can I get a vote to approve the report, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, any objections, abstentions? No, okay, great, report approved, on to the next step.
Great to have these houses with us, really good.
Yeah, really.
They're beautiful, yeah.
They really are, really are, and, yeah, very proud to have them. All right, well, I think, Shannon, do we have any other business on our agenda?
No, I was just curious if, if you had had a chance to chat with our new friend from 33 Waterville, I know with the power out last week, it was, there was limited opportunity, but I was just curious if you'd had a chance to reach out to her yet?
Not yet, she's on my list for tomorrow.
Sure.
I have a pile of information to send to her, so this is a lady who is in the process of buying or has purchased 33 Waterville Road, which is in...
They purchased at sight unseen.
Oh, oh wow.
They purchased at sight unseen, now, I've got, can you folks see, I've got the, my GIS up, can you see that?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, okay, that's fine, I'm just gonna zoom into 33 Waterville while you're chatting then, as long as you can see it.
So this is a house that is being added to the Farmington Historic District, that report went into the state today. It was built by Noah Wallace, of Noah Wallace School fame. Wallace is such an interesting man, he was, for Farmington, kind of one of Farmington's early 20th century developers, in that he built a number of houses, he moved houses, he demolished older houses, he was really very much a creator of what a large swath of Farmington Village looks like today. He made his fortune in the lightning rod business, and purchased a considerable amount of acreage, part of which now comprises winding trails and part of Avon Old Farm School, and he built himself a hunting lodge there, he raised English hunting spaniels, he had a trout pond, all sorts of things. Winding Trails is now doing an excavation of his professional archaeological excavation... Winding Trails is now doing an excavation of his, professional archaeological excavation of the foundation of his hunting lodge. Interesting man, he made his money, did a lot of work in, here in Farmington. Farmington was his home. But in his later years, he moved to Florida, he died in Florida. And after his death, he left money, whoops, is everybody there? Whoops.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're here.
Sorry, you, you guys went out, I didn't. He left, he left money for the, for the maintenance of Noah Wallace School. They ended up using that money to, to build the school itself. He was, is buried at Riverside, so he came back home, so to speak, in his, in Riverside Cemetery. There's only one photo, Jay Bombara, those of you who know Jay.
Right.
Fabulous historian. He's only been able to find one image of Noah Wallace, one photograph. So he was a quiet man, he did a lot. But he was, he was not, he would not thrive well in today's social media atmosphere. He liked to do things quietly and behind the scenes. Very much a Farmington character, I would say. So at any rate, 33 Waterville is one of his houses and it is a lovely house. The golf course sits behind it, it backs up to some preserved land. It's a gorgeous building.
My question here is, why didn't he join, the house joined Farmington Historic District?
Oh, 33, he is, yeah, 33 Waterville is joining Farmington.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, they are joining Farmington. Yeah, they had five new buildings going in, I think five.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, five, yeah, and that was one of them, yeah.
Excellent.
There's a new, it's a, he's, obviously he's in the process of selling it. We have a new family moving into town that has purchased it, that the woman that's purchased it and her family, she's done a considerable, so she called me out of the blue last week and she already had more information on the property than I could even possibly give her. And her enthusiasm on the phone was off the charts. I wanted to know all the nitty-gritty. And I said, I have just the person you need to speak to. So I put her in touch with Lisa and I can't wait to hear the report back from Lisa after she speaks with her. So that's why I keep, because I'm like, you have, like the energy from this, this woman, she's so excited to be moving. They're moving up from Alabama, Missouri, so one of the southern states and they have a historic home there. They're so excited to have a historic home here. But they, they purchased it site unseen because every time they kept coming, wanting to come up to try to do house visits, the house, like their flights were getting canceled, they were losing the opportunity to purchase things. So they just said, okay. And there's a tunnel that goes from the basement of the main house to the basement of the garage.
Yep.
So she figured if nothing else, it's got a really cool tunnel and we'll hang out there. She's got two, two six-year-olds that are coming to the school district. So, yeah, so they're in for a wild ride. I said, God bless you, you're never going to find them on that property.
Are they planning to live there?
That's what I understand, yes, yeah.
And they never actually been inside?
Nope.
This is real estate in the age of COVID, right? You gotta do what you gotta do.
They didn't have a choice, they had to be here, they wanted to be here before the school season started and so.
Great, that's great.
So they're off.
I really look forward to talking with her, Shannon, thanks for.
Oh, absolutely.
Nice.
Bright spot, bright spot.
Yes, yeah, it certainly was. So, but no, I don't think we have anything else to try to tackle this evening.
Okay.
I did call Paul about nominations for next season or term I would be up against.
Yeah. Yeah, because you and, you and Ann are up for renewal. So, okay.
Just to let you know.
Thank you.
If you need any support there, Bob, let me know. I can't say I know how to navigate that system, but I can, I can make a lot of noise. So, yeah, oh, absolutely, we want you with us for life, so. Good.
That's a good point, maybe.
Yeah. Oh, and that picture, Bob, you sent of the Sanford and Holly building with the tree on it, that was heartbreaking.
Oh, yeah.
They got a little crease in their porch roof, but other than that, they did okay.
Oh, good, good.
That's lucky.
Yeah, when I was looking at that, I was wondering if the structure was damaged.
Yeah.
It looks pretty good.
Good.
Good news, good news. You're right, well, I think if we have no other business before us, I think we'll then adjourn. And I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I make a motion that we adjourn our July.
Oops.
August, June, whatever.
Okay, a second.
I second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, all right. Well, thank you, thank you, everybody. Stay well, take care and.
You too.
See each other soon.
I hope, you know, I really am looking forward to going to a meeting. Being able to physically see people and touch them.
It's going to happen, Barbara, it's going to happen.
Okay, wear your masks.
And thank you, Shannon.
Oh, you're welcome, everyone, it's great to see everybody.
All right.
Yeah, bye-bye.
Take care, everyone.
Have a good night.
Night.